To write this thing, I think we're gonna need some legal assistance. You know, I had, just in my opinion.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think we can be taxed with writing it.
And how often do we want the consultant here, if at all?
Well.
I suspect in the beginning, often, frequently, to help kickstart us.
Well.
And offer that, just an offer of guidance.
Well, I think.
Then during the work, it may be somewhat less, and toward the end, when we start developing actual, an actual document.
Mm-hmm.
So with all that in mind, I think, in my mind, we're not looking.
Shh, shh, shh. Yeah.
In my mind, we're not looking for a consultant. In my mind, we're looking for a firm that has a variety of services available, although there might be somebody that we interact with more routinely from them than others. And I say that, like, as an example, like, the Collins Institute, where they have all the different resources available and on hand versus an individual consultant that maybe it's not, not as one-stop shop.
Well, we'll have to see what's out there.
Yeah.
You know, I don't even, I have no idea what's out there for those types of stuff.
Yeah, and there, absolutely, there may be more than I'm aware of out there for, yeah.
Well, if we're gonna go looking, we need to write a scope of work.
Yeah.
We need to be able to go out there and say, this is what we want done.
Right, which we know right off the top, just from hearing everyone, is write the charter.
But do we.
That's a very late.
We'll be able to comply with.
Yeah, that's a very late.
Right, but do we also want someone who can advise us on what's being done elsewhere in the state, and also perhaps advise us on what we should be looking at within town government in terms of our interviewing, and, you know, what we should be looking at? I think that's what Eric was pointing out, that you, if you have someone who's got, a company that's got skills, they've got an interview person, they've got a charter writer, they've got somebody who is a data gatherer, that, if we want that, that's the question.
I think someone whose expertise is in the various forms of municipal government as well, that can also offer us the information, like, on the efficiencies or drawbacks of, you know, particular, whether it's forms or aspects of a particular form, or something like that. And rather than us spinning our wheels and reinventing the wheel up, we established a pretty tight timeline.
Yes.
So my sense is, somebody that helps us stay on track with that timeline in terms of the, the information and decision-making process that we have to make would be vital.
So we need to do this sooner.
Yeah, I think.
My next thought is, again, where do we go to? You said the Collins Institute, are there any others?
Well, here's what I would recommend, and I don't know what the, how the committee feels, but I would, I would offer that we maybe we should appoint a subcommittee that can go out, find whatever number the committee's comfortable with, three or five.
Different.
Different firms, candidates, or whatever. You know, start the basis, if you will, that scope of work. Come back to the committee, finalize the scope of work, get it out, and then kind of narrow it down and bring in those, whatever the number of this committee's comfortable with, I would think five, three would be ample, but, you know, because I don't think there's a ton of these places out there.
Okay, in terms of standing subcommittees, if we have one, we then have to abide by open meeting.
Right, yeah.
Even for any of this stuff. So my suggestion might be that we have a point person, and, instead of a formal committee, and bring it so that everything eventually comes out in open meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Because it gets filtered through.
Right.
So would someone step forward for that?
I'll do it.
I'm looking, okay.
Larry's volunteered, I mean, either, either way, let the group choose. You have two volunteers.
Two volunteers, good.
Choose one.
And grab who you need in and out of the group.
Yeah.
So, all right, and let's start probably baseline, three, three solid leads sound good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Five, depending on, you know, if they, if the three, yeah, and if three come forward and they're looking weak, then maybe we.
How about, does it sound logical if we do it this way, since there's kind of two focuses going on here, and we had two volunteer lead persons, and then one of us take, take the lead on the scope of work, the other take the lead on looking for those companies, looking for those.
Sounds good, if you two want to work it out.
I'd rather bounce off Eric's mind, and I would, I think the, the logical place to start is, what did we have a scope document back in '05, and look at what we did then?
Mm-hmm.
And the two of us look at that, and I think we went to MMA, I believe so.
Yeah, that's a good, good starting point.
Yeah, and where else we went to look for leads, and then come back to the committee, say, this is what we proposed for scope, this is how we would like to advertise it, that it's okay, because we have to do this quickly.
Yeah.
Right.
I remember reading something through documentation that was provided to us before, somewhere in that information, there was a form of scope.
Okay, there should have been.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe you're correct.
Don't recall details of it, but I know there's something to start with.
Right, to start.
Okay.
So that sounds good.
We'll work it out.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so, anything else you want to discuss? We have one minute.
Larry, when, I know you're going out of town for, are you back?
I'll be back Sunday.
Oh, okay, so it's not gonna, it's not a long time.
No.
Long trip, okay, good.
I don't think the people who can realize it.
Yeah, I'll, I'll repeat it again, we have a, a paper on the podium up there, we're just asking folks that would like the opportunity to speak, if they could just write their name down, and we'll try to go in order, we just want to kind of have a, some resemblance of order to the public hearing.
And there are chairs, there should be more chairs available to the back, there's a stack back there.
And I know we looked at Gates, did we formalize the schedule of meetings?
We did.
Every other Thursday.
Every other Thursday.
Yeah.
From now till eternity, yeah.
Six thirty.
Correct, yes, we do start at six thirty, and just a reminder that we do have one scheduled tomorrow night, if you can come, very good, because we'll plow through some of this other stuff.
Stuff we didn't get to tonight?
Yeah.
Stuff we didn't get to tonight?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, and we did get through a good bit, and, Bill, if you could just, I don't want to push on the town data, but if we could just get even the timeline of when that would come in.
I'll see what I can do tomorrow.
Because we've got to kind of work on two tracks here.
Right.
Internally, here in town, and then externally of the other town.
I mean, we've got the stuff that George sent us, that I'll get out.
Right.
And I'll see what else, you know, I can get, I'll see if I can get a timeline.
And thank you, George.
Yes.
One, one thing I want to comment on, on this fact sheet, the current business certificates is a number I got from the town clerk's office, okay? My feeling is that there's a lot more businesses in town than three hundred.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, probably double that or more, and I don't know how we can get a better handle on that. I think the assessor's office should have a list of all businesses, because they, you know, know when they do the tax rate, if we do a split tax rate, they would have to know which was which, but they, they sent me to the town clerk's office and would not provide the information, so we may have to go back to them and see if we can get something, something more.
The chamber, would they have any? Well, we'll figure it out, if not, we go by our best guess.
Yeah, it's just an estimate, but.
Actually, that's a number the DOR can give you.
Okay.
Yeah. Because they have to pay business taxes.
Oh, that's right, yeah. So, Madam Chair, I think you need to adjourn with, with reopen after the public hearing, if there's sufficient time, and.
Correct, so.
If we need to adjourn, we can just open the public hearing.
We just have to open the public hearing, because that's all part of the.
Okay.
Okay.
So you need a motion to have that?
No.
No, just open it.
No.
Good.
We need that, we need that list.
So one more time, I'm signing out, because people have just come in.
Yeah. For those folks that just entered the room, we have on the podium up here a paper for people to sign in if they wish the opportunity to make a comment, we just want to go in some order as we go along through the evening, so if you want to make a comment, by all means, we welcome it, but please sign up on the paper on the podium up front here. And I, I can tell from looking at a lot of the faces back there, some of you in the back of the room are having trouble hearing us. We, we'll try to project our voices best we can, and we don't have any amplification available here tonight, so we'll, we'll just try to speak louder as we speak.
I just want to turn, the message on my phone says seven o'clock.
Yeah.
I got here before seven o'clock, and the meeting was, had convened already.
Well, our, our meeting was, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yeah, okay, the public hearing, in which the public is invited to speak, starts at seven o'clock. Our meeting, which is an open meeting, which is not for the public to speak, but for our group to convene and deliberate, starts at six thirty, so the public hearing has not started, it does start at seven o'clock.
So we're not permitted to attend?
You are permitted to attend an open meeting, you cannot speak during our open meeting. When there is a public hearing, you can then speak, that's the purpose of the public hearing versus an open meeting, and any open meeting published on the town website, you as a citizen have the right to go. You don't have the right to speak, but you can go and listen and watch, just as if you were watching on LCAT, it's the same thing, just for your general knowledge, okay?
Or anybody else wants to sign?
Do you need to sign this sheet for all attendees anyways?
Public hearing, yeah.
No.
No.
You sure? I'm trying, we want to ask your questions.
Because it's, Don, you better make it clear, this is too much than an answer.
Correct.
You better.
Right, we are listening, yes, absolutely. Okay, may I have everyone's attention? I'm going to open the public hearing. First, I'd like to have introductions of our commission, and we will start over here.
Russell Denver.
Thomas O'Connor.
Eric Madison.
Dawn Starks.
Larry Levine.
Ray Miller.
Bill Fonseca.
Ralph Page. George Kingston.
I also want to welcome our town attorney, Jim Donahue, who is here, in case we need any pointers or edification, and I'm going to put Jim on the spot for a second, I haven't told him about this, but if you could just speak briefly, just a minute or two, on what our current form of government is, so everyone is familiar with it.
Sure. Presently, your form of government is a board of selectmen elected, and they are responsible for certain departments, and I may miss some, but generally, it's the accounting department, the town clerk, the town treasurer, the collector's department, recreation, fire, police, I think they oversee the council on aging as well, and then you also have elected boards for planning, which is, I think, a five-board member, five-member board, elected for terms of five years, and a board of assessors that are elected, three-member board, in your terms are three years, you have a board of public works, which has a three-board member, three-member board, and are, again, elected for three years, and the board of public works has a lot of matters under their jurisdiction, because some years ago, twenty-five, thirty years ago, maybe even longer, the board adopted a statute which consolidated a lot of the functions that were under the provisions of the board of selectmen, under the board of public works, things such as the parks, they're the park commissioners, they're responsible for the, we hear of the roads and the highways, they are also, by agreement, responsible for the maintenance and care of all municipal buildings, including the schools. I believe that's the gist of your elected boards, other than the school committee, and the school committee functions pretty much independently from those other boards and departments that I've mentioned, because they have their own statute under which they operate, and there's some nuance, special nuances to statutory requirements for that.
You forgot the housing.
The what?
Housing.
Housing Authority isn't directly a municipal board, it's a, it's a combination of a municipal board, who members are appointed by the selectmen, but there's also a member appointed by the governor, I believe.
They're elected, housing authority members are elected.
But I believe there's also one that's appointed by the, by the governor, maybe, so it's not, it's, it's one of those, it's a, it's a municipal board, but it's not strictly under the jurisdiction of any real auspices of the town, I think they, they function pretty much independently of the town.
Is only the planning intertwined or is that?
They, they are separate in the sense that they have independent statutory requirements that they're to follow, they're intertwined in the sense that the support staff for the planning board is also the support staff for the zoning board of appeals, and also, I think, if Mr. Kingston corrected, I think the conservation commission as well.
Correct.
And some confusion over zoning, the building commissioner, who is also under the control of jurisdiction of the board of selectmen, has certain statutory authority, one, some of which is to enforce the state building code, and also to enforce the zoning bylaw in the community, but the planning board is the one with the final responsibility to bring forward zoning changes before the town can enforce them once adopted by the committee.
Thank you, Jim. Okay, before we start, I just want to give a brief overview of our mission and how we got to the point where we are right now. Our mission, as a commission, is to research and present to the town a recommendation of whether to create a town charter, and if so, what form of local government will we have. We collected over seventeen hundred signatures, we got it put on the ballot, and we were voted in this past April fourteenth. We are a nine-member commission. We've had two meetings to date, mostly dealing with organization and scheduling. We are required by state statute to have a public hearing within forty-five days of election, this is that public hearing. We will conduct research through interviews, data gathering, and analysis, to recommend or not recommend changes to the local form of government. There will be a minimum of one more public hearing, we may have more if we so choose. Our goal is to have the recommendation presented to the town on the ballot at the next municipal election on April twelfth, two thousand sixteen. Sixteen. So, tonight, I want to be very clear on the rules for the public hearing. First, if you have any comments, you need to state your name and address for the record, and you'll come up here and state that for us. Try and speak loudly, as the people behind you may have problems hearing, I will also say, I have problems hearing, so please speak loudly. Keep your comments brief and to the point, aim for three minutes, after five minutes, your time will be called, I have a timekeeper here. If you hear him say time, and he has a very loud voice, wrap it up, within that sentence that you're going, let's wrap it up, or else we'll get the hook out. We do have our, our dog officer here, and, okay. Also, if someone else makes your case, don't get repetitious, merely come up and state that you support position X, so that we get a sense that, oh, there's five or six people here who, who support this position versus this position. What we want to hear are your comments, your thoughts for what the future should be for this town, we're looking for your input, we have our listening ears on tonight, tonight is not a back and forth between us, it is not a question and answer period, it is, we are informa-, information gathering from you, we want to know, it's your government, we want to know what you think. So with that, my time master, we'll call the first speaker.
Okay, two points of order, one, first, if I destroy your name, I apologize, and second, I'm kind of recovering from a little back injury, so if I stand up when you're in the middle of talking, please don't be offended, it's nothing more than I need to stand up, okay?
Unless he's getting the hook.
What's that?
You're not going to take him out?
No, I'm not going to take him out, not with this back. Mr. Stetts, Stephen Stetts, am I saying that correctly?
Steve Stites, Al Street. One person in charge, that's what we need, we get rid of the board of selectmen, it's tired, they have no business, not in the, not as advisors, anything, one person in charge, all the department heads, DPW, fire, police, whatever, even the superintendent of schools, reports to that one person, looking down the road, put in this charter, a provision for impeachment or recall, so we can get rid of somebody for whatever. Offer them a four-year contract, four years are up, the town votes yes or no to get rid of this person, yes, they have another four years, no, what happens, noon time the next day, their history, and a five-person team runs the town in the interim, your chief of police, your fire chief, your accountant, head of the DPW, and you can choose one other as a board. In the meantime, the town clerk, along with the other department heads, superintendent of schools, head of the housing department, whatever, sets up a screening committee to go search and find the next person to run the town. These are things to consider down the road, but I think we can, we can handle, again, one person in charge, board of selectmen is out, they have nothing to do after this thing passes, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, he set the standard at a minute forty-four.
I agree with what the gentleman before me said.
Is the last speaker working? No, we're not.
No.
The microphone.
What if I stand this way, is it better?
Yeah.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
I agree with what the previous gentleman said, with the exception, I think we still should have a board of selectmen, and instead of three, it should be five, we have to do something, because the spending in this town is just out of control, and that's basically all I have to say, you took part of my thunder, thank you.
Thank you.
Forty-one, Steve, you're the man. Phil LaRosa.
I'll beat that, I concur with the other two speakers.
One second.
Can I ask a clarification?
Sure.
So, so, one, Mr. LaRosa, just for clarification, one speaker favors a five-man board of selectmen, the other speaker favored no board of selectmen.
I'm all for change, what's worked, what we've got today's not working, that's my suggestion, move forward.
Okay.
Some other four.
Okay, got it, thank you. Joe Akuti. Now, I know you, Joe, five minutes.
It could take five years, actually, but I, I, it will be brief, I, I think some of the points that you're going to hear from speakers.
Turn around, talk to him.
I don't think it's working, but anyway, you're going to have a great deal, number of ideas coming from here, and I think one of the jobs of the committee, and I'll try to do this as quickly as I possibly can, is to inform a lot of the people what forms of government are allowed in the state of Massachusetts, I'm going to go over them in a second, and there is an exception, but you have to partition the state government in order to do something that is all not ready as statute, and Larry knows. Going on that point, there's basically five forms of government, and the board, I hate to talk with my back, I've never been brought up that way. You have to understand what you have in the state of Massachusetts, before you start looking at it and say, change it, because the ideas are great, but this is, this is the committee's job, they're going to do all the work and present this final situation to the constituents in this, in this town, so if you have an internet, go on the internet and look all this stuff up, you have basically, right now, a select board who takes care of business through, I call it a executive secretary, but Nick's job, and from that point, all the jobs are there, and they have to be dispersed and come through a process. What I would like to know, and I want to know from the members, if possible, if not, you can do it another night, why the nine members on this board opted to run for the charter commission, from your personal point, you had a process in two or five that didn't work, I think your mission statement is great, it needs a tweaking, because my mission statement, and I'm just going to say this on a personal level, you're trying to bring the town of East Sloane Meadow into the twenty-first century, technology's running wild, there's, there's nothing wrong with this town, people aren't stealing money from you, you want a better government, I don't know how you're going to do it in less than a year, that's mainly my opinion, I will talk later, there are other people, but thank you.
Thank you. As to why we have run, I believe we, we kind of discussed that in our first meeting, and I would say we will take that up at a later meeting.
Robert Picnelli, please.
I'm showing my age, okay? Robert J. Picnelli, and I've lived in town for sixty-one years, I moved here on my twenty-first birthday, now, I have to agree with the obedient speaker before me, the one just before me, and that is that the state will tell you what form of government are allowed in Massachusetts, and just don't, don't go hog wild. Now, I want to speak first as an educator, and that is that we should look at the education of those people that we hire, this is sorely missed in this town. I'm going to start, and I know as a member of that committee here, superintendents, the first time we've had a superintendent without a doctorate in many years, the people who are with the housing authority and the, and the, this, the senior, senior people here, those require a master's degree in most places, you just don't hire somebody because they have the experience, or because they look good, or because they know somebody, there are educational requirements all the way along the line, you just don't give it to your friend or somebody, oh, that person's been around, and they're a nice person, and let's give it to them, and you get the same thing over and over again, okay? Now, one more thing, I'm going to turn back to another subject, I'm a retired officer in the United States Air Force, thirty-seven years, okay? There are provisions in the military service where you have to have certain educational requirements, now, no reason why we don't have a police chief with a master's degree, we almost got one, okay, almost, fire chief with a master's degree, and there are schools, there are schools that they can go to, so, please, whatever form of government we have, have in mind the educational qualities that you have, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Cook, Paul Cook.
Yes, I too have been in town for, since nineteen fifty-two, I believe. And, uh, several years ago, I had a disabled wife that was trying to get around in the sidewalks and these, I don't know. I didn't know ADA is mandatory. Five oh four rehab act of nineteen seventy-three is a federal civil rights mandate also. And when I complained about some of the things, I was pretty much given the middle finger. And I had to go to the Federal Highway Administration and make a complaint to them to come to this town, have then, I took them around to where the, some of the problems are, and they had to go to the town hall, otherwise, nothing would ever get done. And I've been given foot and runaround and everything, uh, the Rotary was one, where sidewalks were no good, there was no crossing, and they blamed the police department for a reason. And, uh, generally speaking, I think a five-member Board would be okay. I would like to know who, uh, I didn't hear anything about an ADA coordinator, which is mandatory since nineteen ninety-two. And nobody's mentioned that. And if I talk to him, it's like he doesn't know a thing. Well, ADA says a responsible coordinator. So he's responsible for enforcing stuff, too. And you just can't wash things under the rug or sweep things under the rug. But other than that, uh, I don't know, I gotta listen to a lot more comments and see what I think of them, but, uh, something to think about, you know, when you, when you say, "Okay," and you can't have any arbitrary and capricious laws in town. That is to say, "Well, this guy, he knows the mayor," or something, "so he gets to do what he wants." Because I originally came from Agewam, I was spoke by the ma- the Mayor Cohen over there to get the hell out of this town hall when I was making a complaint. And I was actually there to get, uh, some, uh, information. And his lawyer said, "You write it out, and you come in, and I'll do it." And I'm just enough of a thorn in their side over there. When I walked in there, out of the back door comes Mayor Cohen, told me to get the hell out of his town hall, which I had to correct him. So, you know, it's a public house. Now, we've got several things going on in this town, too, that are public facilities, but you're charging to use them. One is Pine Hill. We have others that's on there. I've been told to get off of the bike trail, I don't know how many times, by the police. But, uh, nobody wants to enforce that stuff. They figure, "Well, we're the boss," but no, it's Congress. And when I called Mr. Pupolo, who represents this area, they haven't got around to even getting a state compliant with ADA. Uh, that's about as far as I, you know, I, I, I'm gonna keep listening, but, uh, you see all this stuff over sixty years, and you say, "What's going on here?" When I see a woman across the street with a pick, trying to clear some ice from her spot, and I said, "What are you doing out there cleaning a public sidewalk?" She said, "The school bus has told us," or whatever, whoever, who the authority, "that this is the only place my daughter is gonna get picked up with a school bus." So I said, "Why are you cleaning it?" Well, she didn't know. People are dumped to ADA. But it's your responsibility, it's our responsibility. And it's the town's responsibility to clean every sidewalk in every public facility in the whole town. You can't say, "The neighbor's gotta clean the sidewalks." Mass law might say it, but Congress did not say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaplan, Bill Kaplan, please.
Bill Kaplan, broadleaf circle, actually compared to the two young gentlemen before me, I think I only been here in town for a few minutes. Couple observances I'd like to make. I would like to see somewhat of a stronger form of government. I think probably number one, if we're gonna stay with the Selectmen, I think we should have probably five, number one. And/or, number two, it might be a good idea to have a strong town administrator, someone who can actually make decisions. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Pete Panderson, please.
Good evening, Pete Panderson, Pete Rowe. First of all, I'd like to thank all the nine members for having the passion to step forward, run through the election process, and help the town through this process, so thank you. In my mind, I, I would like to see a, a strong, a strong town manager. Of course, with a strong town manager, you would have to have some sort of control, always gotta have the checks and balances. So I would think that a possible idea would be to have a precinct representative that would be voted from each precinct, I mean, four, and one member of a Board at large, which would be voted on by the town. It's not a Board of Selectmen, the Board of Selectmen should be gone. The word, the word "Board of Selectmen" connotates political representation. And I think one of the main things to do here is to deep politicize this whole thing and stop a lot of the board things that have happened and continue to happen. I also would like to see in this process, so it would be a five-member Board that would have, and I don't know how to, if it's not an oversight Board, or, I'd have to find the right word.
Council.
A council, thank you. So a five-member council that would absolutely interact with the strong town manager, whether it's on a quarterly basis, a monthly basis, an as-need basis, I'm not sure how that works. The state will tell a lot, tell us a lot of that. But I would like to see at minimum, every quarter, a meeting between the five-member council, department heads if necessary, but certainly with the strong town manager, and have a full report from every department head, including the Board of Assessors and including the town accountant, so that everything can be seen as it progresses through the year. Any irregularities can be dealt with at that time with the council and whatever report or whatever Board needs to, you know, go through that process. I would like to see department heads still that, I don't know if they're elected or appointed, I, I don't know what would be proper there, but, you know, DPW, COA, uh, 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 the building department, all these department heads would answer directly to the strong town manager. So it would eliminate layers, eliminating layers would eliminate a lot of expense for the town, although you're gonna have to pay the strong town manager a pretty strong salary, I think. But anyway, these are some ideas, I've discussed them with a couple of Board members, I've discussed them with other members, uh, you know, other people that live in East Long Meadow, other residents, and it's got a little traction. Just seems to be a starting point that changes what we have, takes the politics out of East Long Meadow's government, takes the foolishness, foolishness out of East Long Meadow government, and creates an absolute step of authority in being able to run the business of the town properly. There's lots, lot of stuff that has to be thought about and processed, but that's my, my starting point. Thank you.
Thank you. I see we're at the end of the list, however, are there others? I will open it up now to others who would like to speak. Come forward, same rules apply, tell us your name and your address, and you have three to five minutes before the hook.
I'm Bill Ripson, seventeen, Susan Street. I've thought about our town government, I've found goods and bads about it. We need strong cables who have a strong government. Now, one of the things I would look for in terms of a town manager would be someone that had a program of working ahead as a business manager, because we say we are a business. Town government is a fifty-four million dollar business. One of the things that would help is a favorite phrase in mine, return on investment. I think whoever is gonna run our town has got to look at that term, return on investment. We spend money, what do we get from it? I think it's very important to get our money's worth. You do that at your home, you do it in business, we should do it in our town. The third thing is strategy. Now, if we're gonna run a government in our town, we've gotta have a strategy that says, "Where are we gonna be in five years from now? What's gonna happen when we're gonna get to that point where fifteen thousand people, it's gonna be twenty thousand people? If we don't think in that direction, we're gonna miss the boat. We're not gonna be prepared to meet the challenges that are gonna come to us." So if we had a strong town manager, that manager can look forward to running this town on a very positive basis, knowing where he's going. That's the only way to get somewhere, is to know your destination. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on up. Hold till the end, so that we can continue with people speaking. Please.
Jonathan Torch, Topkins Avenue. Um, I'd just like to say, um, I haven't been around for long, I'm, like, sixteen. But I've been somewhat in, in, uh, in government. In our school, obviously, we have a, uh, what they like to call student council. And after serving, uh, two terms as President, term as Vice President, term as Representative, I've gotten to know how government works. And I think the simple answer that I would like to suggest, and some people suggested elements, is a simple, a mayoral system, a mayor, a five-member council. I know somebody already mentioned that, I stole that idea. And, uh, and it's, and the mayor would, would have the ability to kind of lead the town, be sort of what they would like to call a strong mayor. And I think having that one person in charge, maybe being able to appoint, uh, town officers, so like the DPW, the police chief, the firefighter, superintendent, what have you, would make, you know, one person deciding it, things could go along quicker. I think the fact that we have all these boards and, and members is great and everything, but I think having it simpler and concise, and having fewer, fewer people maybe deciding it could make the process go along quicker. We are a growing community, um, you know, we're grow, we're, we're one of the fastest-growing communities in this general area, so I think, uh, going up to that mayoral, uh, city council-type, uh, system, I think might be simpler for the town of East Long Meadow.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? New comments? Again, please state your name and address, so we can.
John Geraci, thirty-six, one, I don't know. And what you're seeing in East Long Meadow, and I only lived here for thirty-something years, so, uh, there's a lot of gentlemen here before me that have a lot more experience within the town. But when I first moved here, things were fairly smooth, the tax rate was decent, the schools are excellent, and they still are. But what you're seeing now is, uh, not only East Long Meadow, you got Long Meadow, you got Wilberham. The cycle, it's not your father's automobile anymore. They don't make osmobiles anymore. And what's happening is, the cycle is getting stymied. The people, the other league, like myself, who are locked into a fixed income, are really stressed with, with, with the numbers that are being thrown at them. And you looked at, you can talk about the cable bill, there's a lot of things I could talk about here, but, long story short, that cycle where the younger generation comes in, buys a house for your grandfather, your great-grandfather, there's people on my street that have been around for years, they've been, they've been dedicated to the town, they're good townspeople. And actually, one of them should be the town manager, you know, I'll get to that a little bit later. But long story short, that cycle is missing, we're becoming a rental community. Look around, and your tax rate is atrocious. Builders come into town, and real, not to be offensive, but somebody should have stuck a rag in their mouth, they call East Long Meadow "The New Long Meadow." Now, they built the house up the street for seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. And I live in Guineaville. My tax rate goes up five-hundred dollars because of this guy calling Long Meadow, "It's East Long Meadow, Long Meadow." Well, somebody better write that guy a note and wake him up. This is East Long Meadow. That fact that trickles down to my house in Guineaville is offensive, because my house isn't worth anymore, it's worth less. There's three foreclosures, they just sold the house on my street for a hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars, right? And my tax rate goes up, and I'm on a fixed income. And another gentleman mentioned when he dealt with people in that town hall. And there's a lot of nice people everywhere. I had one situation in thirty-something years in this town, and it was wrong, and it was still wrong. And I had never been able to, I've been acting as a professional, a gentleman, talking to people that supposedly know what they're doing, to try and help me, got nowhere, and got insulted, got labeled, and discriminated. Well, I'm telling you, it happens. And why should I be, my name is John. Here he comes again, by a town employee.
Same here.
By a town employee.
Same here.
And elected officials that support this town employee. Where I worked, if you said that, Gibadi, that means goodbye in Italian. So with that said, you look at the rental community, and it's out there. It's out there, it's happening not only here in Long Meadow. And people are doing it because they have to, out of necessity. You look at box stores. I talked to some of these people on the Board here in reference to the property across the street from American Soft, or Rubber Mania. Why is that property empty? I go to Maine every two weeks. There's a store called Market Basket.
One minute, John.
Relax.
You might have missed the rules when you're in late. Five minutes per speaker, you're down to one minute.
Don't nail a stone, you just got back to town, so take it easy. Take it easy. We don't need no five minutes. Long story short, uh, there's a lot to be said, and he's holding me for a minute. And I'm being respectful. I've been respectful in town, my kids went to school here, I got an excellent family, and I asked a question in this town, and I was told never to ask it again.
What was the question?
You know what it is. Long story short, with a little bit of humor, the only good thing is I can see Russia from the back of my yard when it's a full moon. So I'm gonna leave you with that. There's a lot of work that has to be done, they need people to do it, and there's a lot of correction that's needed, and the elders are flat out in this town. And the cable bill, you just gotta, you just gotta, a note on the quit, they're gonna go three-and-a-half percent. Well, they just went up twenty percent on my bill. I was on the committee, partly for a while, to try and rectify it. The two cable companies didn't show up at the one of the meetings I went to. They're giving, they're paying, charging them three-and-a-half percent in town, they should be eighteen to twenty percent. They ain't got no problem going up twenty percent on my bill. It's so antiquated, that cable thing, they story after story after story, they need to be fine-tuned. And that's been a professional manner. I'm just saying, there's, there's a story to be told here, and there's a lot of roughness. Thank you for your time.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Would anyone else, please, come up, state your name? Yep, and then afterwards, gentleman in the back, after this gentleman, please.
Thank you. I'm Hank Tripalsky, I live on Glid Farm Strive, and I've lived throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, so there's all different forms of government, pros and cons. I agree with folks who are talking about a strong management sort of government. I think it should be tempered by having elected representatives who represent all of us throughout the communities in the town. I'm a big proponent of professional management. I think standards should be introduced to define what competent management would be like, and we should get a solid manager who will be somewhat free from politics and free to look at long-term what's good for the town. My concern about just having elected forms of government is that folks can be too responsive to the short term, and sort of miss the, the longer term. And I think there needs to be a healthy respect for what people are willing to pay for taxes and to manage the, the town professionally. And again, set standards, and, you know, by solid leadership of how we respect each other. And so I think there has to be a balance in that sense.
Thank you. And, come on down.
Joe Faminari, Waterman Avenue, Italian section. I know the panel's looking for some ideas, and I think Pete Panderson mentioned some good concepts. But if the panel wants to explore these concepts, I think they should look at some of the communities around us. I mean, you've got South Halley, who's got a strong manager, the former Hoiwok mayor. You have East Hampton with a mayor. You have Agewam with a mayor. I think you should reach out to these communities and see how it's working for them. They're not too much larger than us, uh, and I think you make your job a little easier. That's all I say.
Anyone else with public comment? Not questions at this point in time, but comment. Please come down.
Robert Kinnick, with the forty across the middle road. I'm a former retired accountant at this point, and I just want to say I like the idea of a precinct type of representation rather than that large. And one of the things, as an auditor, I'd like to see a very strong audit function to follow up on that manager. It's just too easy for things to slide, if you know what I mean. But I can agree with a lot of the things.
Anyone else who has not spoken?
Is somebody taking notes?
Yes. We have electronically recorded, and everyone here, in here and on paper. Any follow-ups?
Pete? I just wanted to add a footnote, since everybody's saying, you know, where they're from.
Gotta come up here, can't hear you. And then yell back there.
I just wanted to add a footnote. I'm from here. I live on Pease Road. I was raised on Pease Road. I'll be sixty-four in the fall. I care about this place. I care about the people helping the place out, and I care about the message. I'm a former member of the Board of Selectmen, a six- or seven-year member of the Planning Board, and was also the chairman of the Heritage Preservation Committee for five years. I care about it. I want everybody to put their heads together and make this thing work and fix this. Just want you to know a little bit more about them.
At this point in time, one more, very quick.
I'm gonna go from this side, so I can't waste that walk. There's been a lot of points brought up for the committee. I would strongly suggest that you look at Long Meadows Charter and use it as a guideline, not as a model that you're going to adopt. I think Eric has a great deal of respect that the process went, that took a year and a half to do over there. That's number one. And you will see things in that charter that no community in Western Mass has. I'm only gonna mention one. They developed, we went into the 21st century. We tried our best. It was not perfect. A year later, we had to have another meeting and tweaked it, got input from every department chair. But there was one committee that was added into that charter that most 351 municipalities in Massachusetts don't have. We formed an audit committee. It's an internal audit committee. And they have no functional power except to work under the Select Board and...
Ripper Pot.
Not Ripper Pot, that's the wrong term. But they analyze the external audit that the town has to have done every year. And the external audit has a tremendous amount of strong points that are brought up to the Select Board and suggestions. Most communities in Massachusetts look at the suggestions, and they're not done. They just go over and over and over again. And the Audit Committee in Long Meadow brought into the 21st century open. I know you, at the town meeting, we supported that $50,000 contribution. You can talk amongst your committee tomorrow night. Long Meadow is getting up there. They don't owe $19 million for the Special Committee for Retirees within the community. That's just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point in time, I'm going to close the public hearing. You are welcome to stay and open for if anyone here would like to make any comments.
We might want to point out, someone raised the question, why are we doing this so quickly? One-year period? And the state law requires that this commission, within eighteen months, I believe it is, submit its report to the Board of Selectmen. And then, within a period of time, it would have to appear on the ballot at the next following annual town meeting, not less than sixty days prior. So, the consensus of this commission was, yes, it's a big undertaking to do it quickly, but because of the timeframes, in order to get it on the April 2016 general election, we have to do it this quickly. Otherwise, it would have to wait a whole 'nother year and just sit there. And we thought that it was important to, and that's the reason for the timeframe.
So, just some of the suggestions. So, the first couple of meetings which Dawn talked about, we are developing some criteria for communities to go out and talk to. Those that might have changed their charter in the last ten years, those are similarly sized, same type of residential, commercial makeup, population, those type of things. And a group of people from the commission will go out to those communities and talk to them, what's worked, what hasn't worked. We also plan on meeting with each elected town board in East Long Meadow to see what's worked and what doesn't work. So if you have other questions that you might think that you want us to talk to those communities or those elected boards about, we can forward them to Dawn as the chair of the committee, and we can discuss them as we go about doing our duties on your behalf. So we, so some of the things you have mentioned, we've already started to put into place, but we can always use additional feedback from all of you.
Anyone else here?
Quick comment?
Sure.
I did hear loud and clear from a lot of the speakers a concern on our current form of government in the form of a elected board of selectmen. And I have no idea at this point what our recommendation is gonna look like in twelve months, but I can tell you this, that we live in a democracy. An ultimate oversight of the government will have to involve elected officials, period. That's your voice, folks. For us to exclude any elected official would be to exclude you from the process. That'd be a bad mistake. So, I don't know what that process, I don't know what that's gonna look like yet, but I can guarantee you, the ultimate oversight will be by your elected officials. That was my only comment.
And I'd just like to add, speaking for myself, George Kingston, that I'm open to input from anybody at any time. My email address is out there, my phone number's out there. Feel free to contact me and tell me what you think, you know, as things go forward. I'm very open to input. We have to hear what the town wants, or we're not gonna deliver something the town will accept. So, that's where I'm coming from.
And I will remind everyone that we are broadcast on LCAT on a regular basis, so check us out. Then you can keep abreast of where we're sitting, because everything, all the information we get from, from whatever towns we visit, local, far, in-town, will come out in our open public meeting. We hash it out. We're very cognizant of the fact that we were elected by you. We are taxpayers ourselves. We're very familiar, as I look around this board, with the inner workings of this local government, but we don't know everything. So that's where you come into play. We need to hear from you, and we will do our due diligence, I promise you that, in going out and exploring and trying our best to come up with the best solution for this town. We cannot say what it is right now. We're right at the beginning. It's going to take us a while, so hang in there with us and keep in touch with us, please. Anyone else? Ready, anything?
I have a question. May I?
Yes.
You're gonna have meetings, right? And you said they're on LCAT.
Yes.
Most of the boards in town, during, at the end of the meeting, ask if people have an input. Are questions to ask? Are you gonna have that?
It will depend on how late we are running and how many people are there. We're open to discussion, however, a lot of times, we don't have the answers. Right now, we have fewer answers than you have questions. As time goes on, the answers will be able to be fed to you.
When is your next meeting?
In two weeks. We meet every two weeks. Sorry? I stand corrected. Tomorrow night, at 6:30 here. And then, every two weeks. We got a little hiccup here, because we had to meet the 45-day statute there, so we held it tonight. And then tomorrow night, because we've got a lot of heavy lifting to do. And at this point in time, we're chugging along for every other week. If we decide to change it and have to change it to weekly meetings, we will let everyone know. Everything is posted. Everything is posted. So, check on the town website, look on LCAT. We have a great partner in LCAT in that they have been getting the word out. So, and come, listen. Talk to us on an individual basis, get us your questions, we'll listen. At this point in time...
Just one more comment. In reference, I didn't finish my... I mentioned big-box stores in the site over there, and why it's not developed in tech. And why isn't there any? And I ask questions to the powers that be in the planning board, and, oh, no big-box stores. Well, there's tax base to be had in town. What are we saving this land for? Who are we saving it for? We've got loads that wanted to come over here for years, probably still does. There's tax base available for this town, but nobody, everybody's hesitant on making it happen. And when I say Market Basket, I mentioned the one of the planning board members. They were in front of the board asking for help to help them unload the property. Now, this Market Basket store is just an amazing store. And they got a warehouse over there, they can develop a warehouse, they could do Connecticut and Western Massachusetts. Now, what would hurt to ask them a question you think you'd be interested in, something like this? We can't have a big-box store. Really. Shame on that rule, just like we can't have a sign that says "Open for Lunch," but the thing's been there for the last two years. So, you got issues like that. People come up with stuff, and nothing gets enforced. They just gobble-goo it, and it goes, nah, nah, nah. There's room for improvement, there's tax base in East Long Meadow that can be developed. And the other thing the town needs is policy and procedure. I work for the state, and everything has a policy or a procedure. And this town has none. And I've experienced that. There's no direction. Departments do what they want to do, they're responsible themselves, there's nobody to answer to. It's problematic. And again, we want to tackle this in a professional and positive manner, but there's a lot of loops that have to be tightened up, and it's a long story, and I know I've overstayed my stake. But I want to give my feeling, the way I feel, for my kids, the elderly people in town, and what's happening to them. People like me will not be able to live here. I'm getting killed by the taxes, and I'm dying of natural causes.
Thank you. All right.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Can we take advantage of Jim Donahue's brain for a moment?
Yes.
While we have him? Can you educate the commission? The open meeting law has changed since I sat, about when we have subcommittees?
Excuse us, we're trying to continue a meeting here.
Folks, we're still meeting. If you could, please keep it down. Thank you.
Take it outside.
When we have subcommittees, like Eric and I, will be meeting on the consultant issue. One, do we have to post that? Two, can we deliberate without posting? The statute seems to say that deliberation is by a quorum.
If you're a two-member subcommittee, you're...
All right, so that's how... But what if it was one member?
Yeah, you're not a committee.
That was kind of where I was going with it.
So, if, can Eric and I speak?
You can speak, it's like you're not a subcommittee.
Right.
Well, you're not, you're not a forum with the committee.
When you say deliberate...
Right, okay.
No decision, we're not making any decisions. We're bringing those forth to the full board for the decision.
You can speak, but you can't deliberate. There's a difference.
Yeah. Gather information.
Right.
Don't go down that slope. I'm telling you, you're never gonna win, because don't have it posted, and you're sitting there, and you're talking, and someone files the complaint that you're violating the open rule, you're on a defensive now, and you have to justify the discussion that you had, and it didn't work. It's good for me, gives me a lot to do.
But even if it's less than a quorum of the nine?
No.
No, it's a subcommittee.
Yes, subcommittee.
I don't need to, I'm sorry. Four of you can be and discuss anything.
Okay, so, I guess I'm not following you.
Don't make a subcommittee. We don't have a subcommittee.
It's not a subcommittee.
Two of you can speak.
Yeah, just two people.
Two people are just doing this.
They are now a sub of this board, and required to keep their own minutes.
So how, how can Eric and I communicate without being called a subcommittee?
Well, we don't...
We don't, we don't designate you, this board does not designate you and Eric as a subcommittee.
Okay, right.
You're just going out to...
You're just going out to gather information.
Information and bringing it back, but you're not taking a position between the two of you to present to the committee. You're just bringing back information that you gleaned from whatever sources you went to see.
So we could not take, say, the proposal from 2005 for the consultant, what the scope of work would be, and discuss it and edit it and bring it back here?
Yeah. Yeah, you could.
And I'm not following.
Well, we couldn't decide on the ultimate edit. That has to be done by the committee.
No, no. Okay, but you and I can speak, hey, we don't like this, we do like this, etc. Okay. As long as it's four members or less?
And as long as those members haven't been designated by the committee as a subcommittee of the committee.
So we just don't say...
Exactly.
Just don't use that magic word.
Well, don't we use that?
You're not a subcommittee. You're not bringing back a position of all of the people who were, the four people who were doing this. It's not coming back as a position of you four. It's coming back as, this is what we each think, and you're presenting it to the board for discussion.
Fact-finding.
But the four, but the four could make, this is what, as the four of us have come together, we're presenting it to the commission for their decision.
I think the difference, correct me if I'm wrong, I think the difference, Larry, would be that we would come back and say, look, here's, our research has shown, here's our options. Versus coming back and saying, here's our recommendation.
Right, yeah.
Fact-finding.
So we come back with, these are the options that we found out there, lay them all out. The pros and cons to each option, if we wish, and allow the committee to then make a decision. Versus coming back and saying, we've researched this, here's our recommendation.
Okay.
You have no authority, the four of you, let me say four as an example, would have no authority to make any recommendations as a group to the committee, nor would you take any votes or binding any of the four members. And the four members could move out on a given day, somebody's on vacation, somebody else turns into Phil.
Yes.
Right?
So, yes, and there would be a lot of flexibility now.
Right.
Right.
The key is, the key is, if you're designated as a subcommittee, you now become a municipal board, subject to all the open meeting rules and requirements, but you keep me in the post.
So we don't have to post?
No.
No.
No. You're not a subcommittee.
Right.
You're not a subcommittee.
You're an individual.
You have a task. Yeah.
But you have to be careful not to circum, not, not so that it doesn't become, it looks like you're circumventing the law in order to have the meeting with three or four members.
Now, if less than a quorum of this group goes out to another town or city and speaks with that board about their experience with their change of government, can that, and we'll use four again, can the four at that meeting with that city or town discuss while they're sitting with that city or town?
If they're in, if the other board is... You don't care whether the other board's in session or not. That's their issue, if they're in session. As long as it's not a quorum of the nine of you, it's not five or more, the four of you can talk about anything. But you're just talking. You're not making decisions for the group that's coming back. Each of you are gonna come back with your own impressions, and you're gonna give your own impressions to the full commission.
Could we give the impressions at that meeting?
Sure. It's just like you, it's just like you see at the coffee shop, and you see them having a discussion, to your people who are in the room.
And actually having unique perspectives, I think, will give us more depth.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely.
Well, as I look around the table, we're certain to have some unique perspectives.
Well, this is good.
Glad we're here. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Yes, and thank you for coming, Jim. Sorry to put you on the spot, but I figured you... I warned you on the pool that I'd have you.
Thanks, Jim.
Jim, thank you.
All right.
All right. So, anything else for tonight, or do you want to wrap it up and...
Move to your...
Second.
All in favor? I will see y'all tomorrow night. Oh, by the way, can you guys help us put away the chairs?
Sure.
No, wait a minute, before everybody gets up, Jonathan, why don't you come up here? Introduce Jonathan.
Yes, yes.
This is Jonathan Torso, who has agreed, he is currently a sophomore, going to be a junior in East Long Meadow High School this coming September. He has agreed to be our secretary.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Dawn and I are going to continue to work through this, get him set up with Marge, get some training, with a goal probably around June 11th for first meeting.
Great.
Thank you.
Good.
Marge will be your mentor.
Yes.
I said, if she can become, if you can become a mini Marge, it'd be awesome.
So, thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
And you're going to learn a lot about government.
And then Marge, thank you. You've done a great job.
Oh, you ain't heard nothing yet.
We're just starting.
We're just starting. Okay, thank you.